Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for June 7th, 2016. We have six members of the commission present tonight. Commissioner Hansen is excused. Jumping straight into our agenda, we have two items on our consent calendar, which are the minutes from our last meeting and a temporary use permit for a fresh fruit stand in the SC 2 zone. Commissioner Pack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I remember that we approved the consent calendar as listed in the staff packet.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion of the motion? If they ever say aye.
Aye.
The opposed. Motion carries six to zero. We have two public hearing items tonight. First one continued from our May 3rd meeting is amending the 2009 West Jordan City Code regarding mural or wall art. Who goes first on this one?
Kelly.
The time is now yours, Commissioner Green.
I'll go because I'm the one that made us bring it back. So, as you recall, this was continued from back in, it's been continued twice, I think, actually, since then, to give everybody a chance to look at this. This was based on some city council direction to take a look at that. This body approved one that the city council later rejected, brought one back, and the wording didn't work very well. And so, this is the ordinance that you have before us, is the rework. As you all know, this was sent out, we had some surveys sent out. City attorneys had a chance to hack off on it, and so we have, so what we have now is the draft. After we come back for comments, then I will, there's a couple of things that I think we need to talk about, but for now, I think everybody understands the history and has seen this probably more times than you want to see it over the last several, last three or four months. So, with that, we'll just leave, we'll leave it there and go with everybody else's comments.
Okay. Commissioner Heiner?
I just wanted to commend Commissioner Green for taking the time and spending all the time that he has in research and putting this together with concern for the city, and it just goes back to what our jobs here are on the commission or things like this, and we all bring something to the table, and this is in Commissioner Green's wheelhouse, and I think he's done an excellent job with it, and I appreciate the effort that you've made on it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pack?
Thank you. I'd like to concur with what Commissioner Heiner has said, especially with this being a quasi judicial action, I wanted to ensure that I saw things from all angles and what have other places done, what's the legal precedent behind this, just so we're not doing what we think personally, but we're gathering lots of information. So, thank you for being the focal point on that, as well as getting some feedback from council, from city staff, and that, that's really helped in my deliberation. So, thank you very much for all the time and effort that's been put into this. We want to make sure we respect everyone on all sides of the issue and do what's in the best interest of West Jordan.
Did you have some comments?
Well, perhaps we can turn some time over to the city attorney's office, minus one or a couple, so.
I only had a couple of comments, and I think I sent them all. One of the questions that I had was the determination that it was visual in nature, and visual was an undefined term. And one of the questions was regarding letters and characters and text, and I wasn't sure how you determine what those were when obviously you could have some kind of artistic rendition of some sort of text, and would you be able to make that determination? And so, the only, and the only reason I bring those up is just to assist in the planning commission's discussion of how you want to proceed with the ordinance as it's presented, and whether or not you're going to suggest any additional changes or revisions when you make the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you need to open up for the public hearing.
It should be brief.
As this was agendaed as a public hearing, I will now hold this meeting to the public. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item, we invite you to the microphone. If you would kindly give your name and contact information, and the event city staff would like to follow up with you on your comments, and you would have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing and continue the discussion on murals and wall art. Commissioner Green?
I agree with Ms. Alcorn. The issue that we have, and I think the sentence that we're focused in on is, it's on the second page, I mean, the third page of the ordinance, in D8. It's about line 95. It's 1383D8, where it talks about murals must be visual in nature, no text lettering or character from any language should be used. Now, I think that's the one, that's the one you're talking about, right? I tend to agree that this one's, of all the sections in this ordinance, this is the one that may cause us the biggest issues. And the reason that we originally put that in there, as you see the subnotes, is that everybody, when we did the surveys with the council, with the planning commission, even with the public, nobody wanted commercial-type wall art. The difficulty, the difficulty we have is what's commercial and what's not. Commissioner Quinney, you mentioned a few, you know, a few minutes ago, if I put up a sign that says "I love Utah Jazz," is that commercial or is that not? Is that, you know, you put a "I love Utah Jazz" with a jazz logo on it, is that commercial or is that not? The idea of, you know, the idea of what's commercial becomes almost as subjective as, like what you said, is what's art? And so, that particular sentence was, was an attempt to try to regulate a lot of the commercial stuff, because most logos have letters and characters and those kind of things in it. That was an attempt to eliminate as much commercial as we could, but it does cause a couple of issues with, you know, if you created a sign, you know, some of the old 1960s art that said "love" and "peace," and, you know, very artistic, does that, that would be banned under this ordinance? And the question is, that, is that what we want to do?
Or what if, one thing that jumped out at me with that one is if, say, a charter school lets their kids paint a mural on the side of the building, and it includes the letters, or who knows what.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And so, I mean, from a, from a perspective of where I'm at, I'm okay, I'm okay dropping that, because, but the thing that that would do is that none of this ordinance would direct anything at a differentiation between commercial and non-commercial art. And, I mean, I guess if it's tastefully done, you know, and that's, that's all relative too, but if it's, if it's done well, you know, does it really matter that somebody put up wall art and it advertises their business? I, the answer to that is, I don't know. I do know that, as we talk, there are, there are three options, really. We could not regulate wall art, which is probably not what we really want to do, because that would just allow chaos, because you wouldn't know what graffiti and wall art is and anything else. We can regulate it under the sign ordinance, but given the current state, the way sign ordinances are in the, in the, in the country, and, and I know that most city attorneys, as we talked about, most city attorneys are saying, "Well, we'd rather regulate it under a sign ordinance," but our sign ordinance would need some serious rework, and the third thing is to do something like this. You know, my opinion is reform this to the city council, and we let the city council decide what they want to do, knowing that what we try to do is create a content-neutral wall art ordinance that I think if we, I think if we struck number eight, would actually meet most courts' constitutional scrutiny. It'd be close, but because of the way we restrict a couple of things, like the obscenity and the, that's not protected, so we should be okay. So, that's where I'm at with this, and so I tend to agree, I tend to agree that that particular line is probably the, one of the largest concerns and the question is, do we want that in the ordinance or not?
Commissioner Scotty?
Thank you. The only thing that I see as a problem there is if we, if we strike that, then what's to say, what's to differentiate the sign ordinance from the mural ordinance? Because maybe I have a sign in front of my building, but I want more attention, so I paint a bigger sign on the side of my building with my business name on it, and when the sign enforcement people come out and say, "You can't do that," I say, "Well, it's a mural, it's wall art." So, you know, there's just, I'm wondering how we're going to differentiate between mural art and the sign ordinance, because clearly, there's going to be some contention there.
When we first started talking about this, we talked about that, and I think that was part of the sign ordinance, but that's not, I don't see that contained in here anywhere that says, "I can't paint my logo on the side of my building and have it be called a sign." At that point, I think you're right, it becomes a mural, and I don't know if that's what we're trying to avoid or not.
Right, well, you know, I'm not necessarily against that. I think some of the, you drive down to Cal and Salt Lake, and you see some of those old painted, you know, signs that were put up for Coca-Cola products and stuff, and they kind of have like a charm and a really nice kind of look to them now, you know, but as the bricks patina and whatever, but I don't know, I guess that's really my question is, is if, if it all comes down to kind of line eight here, where we're, we're trying to regulate it, but, yeah, it's a slippery slope, because once you start pulling little things like that out, then what are we really looking? Are we looking at a sign ordinance or an art thing?
Commissioner Pack?
Thank you. And along with that, on number eight, line 95, 96, just wondering, to me, I could see a potential problem with advertising or marketing, as has been mentioned. If you're, I understand that as Chairman Los was saying, that I don't see any harm done in a school putting out, you know, ABC, but then if you have a mural that does have a business name, and "shop here" or "discount," or, but that, that's the only part I'm having trouble with on it too, is then, as was mentioned, it could become a sign for advertising or marketing, and true, a picture is worth a thousand words, and a picture could be linked to advertising, but to me, there's a differentiation there when it is a mural without text that could include your logo, name, you know, in letters. I don't know if anyone else thinks that that would be an issue, so I just wanted to bring it up with advertising or marketing.
So, could that be reworded then to say, "No text lettering or character that derives specific association to the business in question," but that's pretty subjective.
Well, maybe you could just word it that no text would have a link to a, you know, registered entity or, you know, registered business. That would, that would still free up language, you still use language, but you can't put a registered business name or a registered entity in the text. Because then you can say whatever you want, really, as long as it's not hate speech.
So, what if it's a logo versus text?
That would still be, well, as long as it's not a registered logo, if it's something that's copyrighted or, that's.
It's your business logo.
Right. Well.
Because that's not addressed.
I mean, I mean, we could change something to say registered, registered names or registered logos, something like that. Would that?
I'd be in favor of that. That makes sense to me, registered.
I don't know.
I think we need to regulate it.
What do you think?
That's my issue.
And I'm still a little bit hung up on how we differentiate advertising, and if you've got, you know, we keep going back to the one instance that's kind of brought this before us, if, if the entire side of the building is now burritos and enchiladas and chips and salsa and vegetables, is that advertising or is that mural art?
It's a good question, and that, and that's what really, that's really what a lot of this comes, but when you look at, if you look at the current sign ordinance, that says it can't be commercial, the stuff that happened on the business that started all of this wasn't commercial, except for their name. If, if, if you were to, so for example, if you were to go to Cow Ranch, and they were to put a mural of horses and cows on the side of their, their store, is that advertising or is that just because they love horses and cows? You know, what, what makes it commercial there or not, what makes it advertising or not? And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I can differentiate the two. I think there's a lot, but I'm not sure we want to put the city in that, in that situation to try to determine that. And I think that's what happened in this particular circumstance.
Commissioner Heiner?
Isn't it a matter of, you said one of the three options we had was not to do anything. We're left open there for litigation or scrutiny, whatever it is, and then, and then the other one is to, is to pass this. You're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, really, so that's kind of the dilemma we have right now.
Commissioner Green?
Are we, are we really in trouble of scrutiny if we don't do anything? We have a sign ordinance, and basically, we're trying to pull all the language out of the sign ordinance and throw in this mural ordinance, and we're not changing anything?
Well.
We're still, I mean, it seemed to me that the whole entire point of it was to make the process simple and, and, you know, regulate it a little bit. I have, you know, I think that the idea that we're requiring permits and for it to be presented to us in a, in a meeting to require approval, and then there's an appeal process, it's just, it's just tedious. We're not going to have enough, we're not going to have enough issue with this to make this, make it worthwhile. I just don't think that we're in that big of a quandary if we say, "You know what? Maybe we don't do a mural ordinance."
The theory that, just so you know, the theory behind the permit was just so that we got something on record to differentiate between graffiti and wall art.
So, why couldn't they just come in and drop off a diagram at the planning office and say, "Here's what I'm going to have," and somebody could look at it and say, "Great."
Well.
The reason is, is because right now, it would fall under the sign ordinance. It, it falls, so if, if a code enforcement officer goes by and doesn't likely seize, he can regulate it as a sign. So, what we're doing is we're trying to apply some sort of an ordinance that would allow for wall art and allow for murals outside of the sign ordinance, so that this conundrum that happened on that restaurant doesn't happen again.
I get it, I understand it, and I think that, I think we're moving in the right direction. I'm not saying we just kill it.
Right.
I think, I think that we're just getting too bogged down in this. Right? If it's not, if it, if it isn't falling in these categories where it's not residential, it's not historic, and it's not obscene, and if it's in something where it's only half to 50% of the size of the wall, who cares? Right? Shouldn't it really be our job to tell somebody that they can't say "ABC tacos" on the side of their building, and they have a sign? Who cares?
What if it's the size of Sears, and they're not using 50% of their wall?
And what if you live right next to that? You know, I, I don't know. I just, you know, it also comes back to the same thing that we hear every meeting in here. Well, you can't build that, because I was told that my view of my mountains would never be obstructed, and, you know, who told you that? That's, the property owner has a right to build what they build on their property, as long as it's under zoning, and that's the same thing here.
I just think that, I mean, I understand your, your grand example. Sears is not going to be able to paint Sears on the backside of their wall. Right? But the little taco stand, or the little fruit stand, or the, you know, "So delicious," whatever, is going to have a tiny little building, and they're going to put a tiny little mural on there, you know, the bar on the corner is going to have a picture of beer. Right? That might be offensive to some, but it's not an obscene picture. I mean, are we just getting too bogged down in this? Are we making this too difficult?
I think it's too difficult anytime you try to regulate something as preformal flowing as art, you know? I mean, how do you define it first, and then how do you box in rules to apply that to something that isn't defined?
If you get a, if you get a code enforcement officer who goes out and says, "You know what? I'm going to ride, pick it up, and bring this forward." If I don't like that as the business owner, then great, let's set up an appeal process that they can come down to the next planning commission or the next city council and plead their case, and then let the body decide at that point, right? It just, we had an issue with one person who had a problem with it, and the city, the city came out in support of that taqueria, and saying, "I don't have a problem with that." Right? That was all I saw, was people who were in favor of letting them keep that.
Yeah.
If the people who had a problem with it, they're not here telling us they have a problem with it, why are we making changes?
Well, because you had to make the changes so that people could be in favor of that particular piece of wall art on that building, because it violated city code.
Correct, so we'll pull it out like we are, but let's not over-regulate, because let's not create a permit and an application and a presentation process where we have to have a public hearing.
And we can.
Right? So, what I'm hearing is you are in favor of the not regulated.
I, I think we could scratch out number eight, we could scratch out, we could change out 1386 that just says, "They got a picture of what they want to draw on their building and give to Scott, and Scott can be great. This matches, it's not obscene, I'm okay with it."
Commissioner Pack?
Oh, thank you. And it's a little bit past, but that was another issue that I had, and might have seen that as I was responding to the email, just taking it to an extreme on line number 77, D2, the 50% ratio, 50% of the Sears building is different than 50% of a taqueria or some other local fruit stand or, or something else. And so, that was my, I guess I'm just always thinking worst-case scenario, to take things to an extreme, since does this pass the litmus test? So, that was my question too, if, if there should be some maximum limit to the size, because when you say 50%, I can see some people saying, "Well, so-and-so gets his sign to be this big, and mine can only be this big. That's not fair." And also, do, you know, we want a huge mural, 50% the size of Sears, so anyway, I just wanted to bring that up as a potential issue, and I guess you could look at every line, and there's going to be a potential issue, someone's going to, you know, try to interpret this in their favor, which is common and fine, and to speak to Commissioner Quinney's idea, it's true, as Commissioner Scotty said, it is so hard when you're trying to regulate something as preformal and art as art, but I think it would help if we had some type, I don't know if the word "permit" is correct, or if it's just a matter of semantics, but something that they need to tender ahead of time prior to doing this, because I think that's where the problem was in this, is it was done, and then we had to go back and think, "Oh, boy, is this something that we want to have stay there?" So, I, I think, let's put the horse before the cart, instead of the other way around, and at least get somebody to sign off on this. I agree, maybe it's just staff, maybe it doesn't need to be something that we see, maybe it does, but just so long as they have to get some type of authorization prior to doing it.
And it would be, I mean, as you look at this, by the way, on line 77 with the 50%, that was just a guess to start with. We only had one person actually gave us a percentage in the survey, and they said 30. And so, you know, 30, I put 50, we can, that numbers easily, and as we're talking here, the way this is written out, we could easily strike D, E, and F on that last page in 1386, and just says, "The application has to be filed." Really, all it says is, "The application has to be filed with the city." So, that means the city notifies, and there's no approval process, and, and then the city staff looks at it, and as long as it's not inter-residential zone, historic landmark, or obscene, or it incites imminent danger, that it's de facto approved, and we don't have to have the rest of the process. So, that would be very easy to strike that, make that work.
And that we'd still have the appeal process too, if it.
That's right.
They could always.
Commissioner Pack?
Thank you. Just to clarify, but if there is an application, that means that you're applying, because then they need to find out if it is approved or disapproved. So, I think we're just trying to figure out who's going to approve it, because if you apply, why apply if there's, if it's just rubber stamped or nobody's looking at it? It seems like we've got to someone to say, "Hey, sure, go ahead."
I think the idea is that you've got a copy of it, so that when you come in and say, "I've got my, my picture there of my tacos, but when I show up to the building, there's a picture of tacos, but there's also a picture of something else that shouldn't be there," we have something to stand on. Right? It's, it's not, I don't think we're, we need to be trying to do this to say we're trying to control, right? It's to have a copy of what the intent is versus what the reality is.
I agree with that. It would give us some teeth for those who come in and ask for forgiveness rather than permission too, so that's the reason we had that issue in the beginning, correct? And I, I think, I don't know what, if there is a percentage, but I think you'd see a percentage of those people just painting it anyway, and then coming and doing it if someone says something. So, how we put the teeth in it when you do have that issue, I think is important too.
Commissioner Scotty?
Thank you. I still like that, you know, the line 102 through line 112, basically where it says, "Murals are not permitted in residential zones, murals are not permitted on historic landmarks, murals that are obscene are not permitted, murals that are directed at inciting or producing imminent danger and is likely to incite or produce such action." So, I like that there's still a baseline for us to say no, but, but those don't allow us to say that, you know, if there's three pictures of tacos and something else, that, you know, as long as it falls within the baseline parameters, then they're allowed. Then we're not centering art, you know?
So, I guess my first, my first question is, we want to change the 50%.
What was the percentage of the wall on the taqueria?
About 110.
Was it that big? I didn't ever go see it.
Yeah, it took up, it took up two walls.
Yeah, it was steep.
It took, it took up, did it take up the south wall and the east wall, right?
The north wall and the east wall?
No, south, south. It's one that pays 78, and the, and the one that, it pays 78, 32.
I never see that one, I always see the one that's on the north face.
Oh, is there a north face? Okay, they pay, they pay on three sides now.
Is it 50% or a max of 15 by 15? Just throwing out some numbers, or?
I don't really have a problem with the size, to be honest with you. I mean, there are some tastefully done buildings that are all painted up, and it's the whole building, and it looks great, you know? There's just as a, I don't know if you've been on Seven Piece in Sandy, kind of around the 90s, south area, there's a record shop down there that has like a, it's like an astronaut helmet seen, paste on, or painted on the side of the building, and it takes up the whole wall, but it, I think it looks really cool, and it fits the business that it, you know, that it's at, and it's kind of become a local thing, you know? It doesn't make the city look ugly or anything. So, I think, you know, I don't personally think that there needs to be a parameter on how much space that the art takes up.
If we're going to go down that road, I'll just throw it out there, is it prohibited, or make it so that it's only one wall?
That's mentioned, I think.
I know, I know it's mentioned, I'm saying, Josh, to Josh's point, some buildings can be tastefully done with wall, with art on all four, on all four walls. I have no problem with the size.
Maybe put it on one wall of buildings.
This is, this says it's only contained in one wall, right?
It does.
That's what I read.
Yeah, line 75.
70, yeah.
Do we want, is that, is that necessary? Um, do we want, is that, is that necessary? Do we need it controlled? Do we need it contained to one wall only?
I'd be fine with that.
I don't have an opinion either way, I'm just asking the question. I don't think we need to regulate the size.
Well, if you regulate the size, you might as well go back to the sign.
I make a couple comments.
Please.
Yeah. So two, two points, um, just reading the current definition of a sign, it says materials placed or constructed. Or light projected that A conveys a message or image. And B is used to inform or attract the attention of the public. Is the, is the large hamburger or taco painted on the side of the business attracting attention? I mean, it. We we talked about this and kind of skirted and danced around with that, um. If the city is ultimately gonna be asked to review these murals. Um, if we have Cal Ranch coming in with a big picture of a a. Some some tackle, a saddle or whatever, and they're, they definitely sell that item there. You know, where where do you draw the line? You know, they're they're advertising product on their building. Um, secondly, uh, if we do go down the the permit. I I would also just uh, put my two cents in that it would be nice to include or keep uh, line number ninety-eight. Uh, E, uh, eight E, the reported property owner, just some sort of permission. That's often the distinction between art and graffiti.
Yeah, right.
So, um, it'd be good that we keep that in there if if indeed the commission or the council ultimately says that, yeah, we do wanna regulate these things, so. Just a few thoughts.
Commissioner.
Well, thank you, and and I can see why we're, you know, why we're saying that this should go before the planning and zoning commission when someone tinders an application because then you get. The synergy of seven people working together versus putting you in the hot seat, of you making the decision.
Right, well, even if it did say zoning administrator, full disclosure, I would not act in the back and I would definitely consult those folks across the way in the attorney's office, so.
Okay, great, and I I don't even know if it needs to be a public hearing, does it? You know, notice.
That's that just happened, that just happened to be that that's what. Both Los Angeles, both Los Angeles and Portland have some sort of public involvement to provide feedback to the artist to say. That's pretty stupid on that wall or whatever, to to give them an opportunity to fix it with some neighborhood input. Whether that, whether that's what we wanna do, that that's where, to give you an idea, that's where that came from, was both L A and Portland.
Do they have examples where that actually happened? Did you find anything?
L A's got so much wall art, it had to have happened a lot of times.
Portland too, they've got a ton of wall art.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, the only downside that I can see to a public hearing is then it. It brings in a public that maybe does have a vested interest or doesn't have a vested interest. And maybe that's their, not their style of art, so they can come in and and boo hoo it and they have a say over what the property owner. Wants to do, so, you know, I. To some extent. If we give credence to that, then we have to give credence to the people whose mountain view is obstructed, because it's the same thing. So, you know, in a sense, I feel like I would be more comfortable just having the baseline of that it's not obscene, you know, what's listed in here. And just letting the staff say yes or no, it meets a criteria.
You wanna throw out a motion?
So.
Did we get a write down changes on this before we?
So, yeah, that 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 was my question is is, I mean, I'm willing to make the motion, are 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 there any changes that that we wanna see that? Let here, let me make, let me make the motion. First, I move that we make a favorable recommendation to the city council. With. With with the way it's written, except we drop. Thirteen eight six. D, E and F. And then substitute for D. Put final approval. Rest with the zoning administrator. To try to keep that simple.
Say that again, I'm sorry, the last word?
So drop D E and F on the very last page. And replace D with final approval, rest with the zoning administrator. That eliminates the public hearing and the and the everything else. And and then that would leave it with that there would be an appeal process anyway.
Where did we settle on line ninety-five, six, ninety-six?
I don't know if we came to a decision, the house wait for somebody else to 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 help to modify that, the the motion there. For on on, cause I guess the point of discussion was line seventy-seven and line ninety-five and ninety-six. So my motion would be to approve and drop the the last, uh. I guess. Cause I I'm not sure I heard a consensus on the on the site, on the size.
I I would suggest that there would be a little bit on the size, that would be my suggestion.
All right, we got a, we got a motion, we need a second for further discussion.
I I thought we were finalizing all of our cases before we.
I I made that motion and, but it hadn't been seconded yet, so we can, I don't care what we do. How far, how.
Let's do this, let's.
It seems to me we should get our changes knocked out and then make a motion.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
What are the changes we consider?
I've got a couple.
We have to talk about line seventy-seven.
I would.
Okay, let's back up a little bit. Commissioner.
Let's strike line seventy-seven, seventy-eight. I don't think we need them.
Seconded.
And also strike ninety-five and ninety-six.
Okay.
Seconded, I'm just making sure that there's at least two people voting that way.
No, I'm I'm with you. And I did like, uh, Kevin's changes of striking D E and F. Basically from line thirty-seven, one thirty-seven on with your suggested. Uh, new wording.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
You wanna try that again?
Oh.
You wanna try it again or?
All right, so I, so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt this draft ordinance as written minus. Uh, D two, line seventy-seven and seventy-eight. Minus D eight. Lines ninety-five and ninety-six. And minus, uh. D E and F on the last page, one thirty-seven through one fifty-eight, replacing D. With the final approval rest with the zoning administrator.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Clint, further discussion of the motion. We're talking about that. Okay, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry six to zero. Okay, last item on our agenda, data warehouses.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, uh, this is a tax amendment to. Title thirteen, sections thirteen dash two dash three and thirteen dash five F dash two. Uh, essentially, these uh, uh, changes, uh, distinguish or create data centers. As a permitted use in the M one zone. Um. As our technology continues to evolve, so does the need. For cloud-based storage in these large data centers to to be built and. As the cities had the recent contact with a few different data centers. Uh, they have requested that we take a look at. Other communities across the nation that have data centers and uh, look at the the language that they've adopted in in their municipal codes, and so we've done that. And with their assistance and with our own research, we proposed the 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 new definition. In thirteen dash two dash three, um, and that's found on page two of the staff report. Uh, we would be inserting this as a permitted use in the M one zone, so we'd have citywide applicability wherever you find an M one zone. Uh, we've gone through the different criteria, uh, in the code that uh, need to be. Addressed for any tax amendment and we've found that uh. Such changes would be consistent with the general plan and with the other uses in our industrial zone. And we uh, ask the commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council for adoption of this ordinance.
Questions for staff? Hearing none. This was also agenda, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public if anybody would like to comment on data warehouses. Seeing none, closed all the hearing and back to commission. Commissioner.
I I move based on the findings set forth in this staff report upon the evidence and explanations received today. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for proposed tax amendments to title thirteen as addressed in this report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Skoski, discussion to the motion. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry six to zero. Which concludes our agenda for this evening.
Could we have? Gonzalez, first group, is that?
That was already approved.
That's right.
So that's it.
Um.
Are our meetings in July the fifth and the nineteenth, is that?
Yeah. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Skoski to adjourn, any opposed to that? We stand adjourned until January first.
Yes, the fifth and the nineteenth.